And so could you give the 32nd version of why police needs to be in a different tenant than the rest of the city?
Yeah, we separated the tenants years ago just because of the criminal justice information segregation that we needed to have to separate that information that transits within that tenant. So it has to be separate from the other, the rest of the city.
And do you envision any other city bureaus or groups needing to be outside of the city tenant in the future?
No.
Okay. Just curious, thank you.
Very good. Is there any public testimony on this report?
We have one person signed up.
Perfect, thanks gentlemen.
Thank you.
Sangha Baklani?
In person or online?
I think they were planning to join in person, yes, or online, sorry. Sangha, are you there?
I am here.
Welcome.
My name is Sangha McBaklin. Once again, you're taking the taxpayers' money and wasting it. To our community, wake up, stay woke. Remember, these are no leaders, they are oppressors that will never give you anything to help you or us not be oppressed. History has shown that this government--
Is this related to the technology report? Can you get to it, or I'm gonna cut you off?
And I said what I said in the beginning. How are you gonna cut me off when I can say what I want to say, correct?
Like that?
Hello?
All right. Any further discussion on the report? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Oh, Mayor, would you like to have somebody make a motion to accept the report?
Please, can I entertain a motion to accept the report? Commissioner Gonzalez moves, can I get a second? Commissioner Ryan seconds the report. Please call the roll.
Rubio.
I want to thank Jeff Baer and his team over at BTS for their work on staffing this commission, and all the members of the commission for their dedication, their time serving the community. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Ethan, for being here this morning. And Jimmy, I've noticed you've become a doctor in the last quarter, so congratulations on that, and welcome, David. You're a very hardworking volunteer committee, your reports are very frequent, and I appreciate it. I accept the report, aye.
Gonzalez.
I'm excited about the diversity of the advisory committee, including both the different communities they represent, as well as different parts of the IT ecosystem, both institutional and startup. I think that's gonna lend itself well for the city. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I want to thank the representatives on the Technology Oversight Council. This is very difficult work, it's challenging, it's technical, we're lucky to have the expertise that we have, and these are citizen volunteers. They do not get paid for their efforts, they are simply concerned citizens who have an interest in participating in how we do things here in local government. For those who feel that your tax dollars are not well spent, or that the council is adrift, or that we aren't delivering the kinds of services that you want, we have dozens of oversight committees, and each and every person in the city is welcome to step up as the members of this Technology Oversight Council have done to serve the interests of the broader community. I really think the work here is exceptional, I appreciate the fact that over the course of several years, I've watched a number of these projects get back on track because of the work of these engaged citizens, and I just want to thank them for that. So I'm happy to vote aye. Thanks again, Ethan, Jeff, and Jimmy, for your hard work on this. And the report is accepted, yes?
Mayor, I'm very sorry, we had someone else signed up for this item--
Oh, let's hear it.
--they were in person.
Yeah, sure.
My mistake, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anjanet Brown was gonna join us in person, is Anjanet here?
Anjanet?
Did you want to speak to the side?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
Not a problem. All right, next item, also timed certain, item 172. I'm sorry, we're not at that time certain yet, we can't do that, we'll go to the regular agenda. Item 177, please.
Accepted from Moore Excavation Incorporated for the South Portland Burlingame Phase 2 Sewer Rehabilitation Rebid Project for $6,242,177.
Colleagues, this project is part of the Bureau of Environmental Services Large-Scale Sewer Rehabilitation Program. This item authorizes the repair replacement of approximately 6,430 feet of aged and deteriorating public sewer pipes, as well as the addition of about 1,000 feet of lateral connections from the main sewer line to the curbs of homes and businesses in South Portland, as well as the Burlingame area. Chief Procurement Officer, Mr. Beaco Taylor, is here with us today to walk us through this proposal. Good morning, Beaco, it's good to see you.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, good to see you. Good morning, members of City Council. For the record, my name is Beaco Taylor, I'm the Chief Procurement Officer. On November 10th, 2021, City Council approved ordinance 190596 for the completion of this project. At that time, the engineering estimate for the project was $6,508,000, and the confidence level was high. Procurement Services issued the invitation to bid on December 20th, 2022, with a due date of January 19th, 2023. In total, we received three bids. Moore Excavation was the low bidder, this was a low bid methodology on the competitive bid. Their bid came in at $6,242,000, which is about 4% below the engineering estimate. The city's standard 20% aspirational goal did apply to this solicitation, and the following is the breakdown in the utilization that Moore Excavation submitted in their proposal. Moore will complete about 70% of this project, 20% will be completed by certified co-bid subcontractors, and about 10% with non-certified subcontractors. Just to give you a little bit more granularity on the subcontractor plan, of the 20%, 14%, closer to 15% will be completed by minorities. Moore Excavation has committed to subcontracting 20% to co-bid firms, and they met that goal. To promote the aim of encouraging contractors to diversify their subcontractor utilization until to avoid misuse of the city's subcontractor equity program, hard construction costs attributable to a subcontractor owned, controlled, or managed by a relative of the person who owns or controls the contract shall not count towards the 20%. I made that comment because one of the prime, one of the major subcontractors on this project, Iron Horse, has a relation to Moore Excavation, and I wanted to put that on record. As reference to past performance, Moore Excavation is located in Fairview, Oregon. It is not a state-certified contractor, they have a current City of Portland business tax registration, and are in full compliance with all of the city's contracting requirements. The project is part of BES's Large-Scale Sewer Rehab Program, which is funded through fiscal year, end of fiscal year '23. If there are any questions about the procurement process, I'm happy to answer them now. If you have any questions about the project specific to engineering estimate schedule, otherwise, BES Project Manager, Daniel Boatman is in attendance as well. With that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions at this point? Commissioner Gonzalez.
Just one quick question, labor representation in the workforce, do we have any visibility on this project?
Not now, I mean, we could provide that once we get into the, once they submit solely in other certified work, you know, work plans, reports, compliance reports. So as of today, I can't provide you with workforce, but I could provide your staff with that once the project is started.
Certainly, as we get into these larger projects, some visibility there would be appreciated.
Most definitely, we do have, we track that in our compliance department.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, and thank you Director Taylor, I have a quick question. You mentioned something about, and I didn't catch it quite, the connection to Iron Horse contract. Can you explain that again, so I understand?
So Moore Excavation committed 9.5% of this contract to a co-bid certified firm. That firm is Iron Horse. So in total, if we were to count that firm, we would be around 30%, but we cannot count that 10% towards our aspirational goal, because Iron Horse has relations, has a family relationship with Moore Excavation.
I see, okay.
I wasn't clear on that, so I apologize for reading through that, but I should have made that a point of emphasis for council.
Great. Commissioner Ryan.
Well, now I have another question, thanks for bringing this up. So if you could add it, what would the percentage go to?
Right over 31% co-bid certified, if we did add that.
Thanks.
Is that a state rule that precludes you from combining those?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that makes sense, I get it. Good, do we have any public testimony on this report?
We had one person sign up, Sangha Mbaklani, but I think they have left the meeting.
Very good, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
I'm moved.
Commissioner Ryan moves, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Rubio, seconds. Any further discussions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Rubio.
Thank you Director Taylor, and the procurement team, and the team at BES for your work on this project. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you Director Taylor, we've been seeing a lot of you, you've been busy, you and your team, I appreciate it. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Thank you Director Taylor, I vote aye.
Matt, sorry, Wheeler.
These are very good co-bid numbers, I really appreciate it. I've seen improvement since you've been director, and so I know you're working it hard, thanks.
Really appreciate it. I vote aye.
Reports accepted, next item. We are still not at 10:15 for the time certain, so we'll do 178 off the regular agenda.
Authorize Water Revenue Bonds to Finance Water System Capital Improvements Not to Exceed $425 Million and to Refund Outstanding Water Revenue Bonds.
Colleagues, this ordinance authorizes the issuance of water system revenue bonds. The Portland Water Bureau manages the city's water system utility and periodically issues bonds for all capital projects. Financing large water capital projects with bonds provides more stable financial operations for the water utility and more predictable water rates for the city's ratepayers. The city's debt manager, Matt Girock, and Water Bureau Director of Finance and Support Services, Cecilia Hewin, are here to talk through the item. Welcome, Matt and Cecilia, are they online, I take it?
Yes.
There you are, okay.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, and commissioners, for the record, I'm Matt Girock, debt manager within the Bureau of Revenue and Financial Services, and I'm also joined by Cecilia Hewin from the Portland Water Bureau. This ordinance authorizes the city to issue up to $425 million of water system revenue bonds to finance various projects under the Portland Water Bureau's Capital Improvement Plan, including portions of the water treatment program as required under the city's bilateral compliance agreement with the Oregon Health. The borrowing authorization is expected to cover approximately the next two years of capital expenditures that are to be funded by publicly sold water revenue bonds. Of the total borrowing authorization, the Bureau currently anticipates issuing approximately $205 million of revenue bonds this fiscal year to cover certain capital expenditures for the next 12 months. However, given the recent volatility in the bond market, the city's Debt Management Division will be assessing the market for opportune conditions to potentially issue a larger amount in order to lock in advantageous long-term interest rates. Based on today's market conditions, the estimated borrowing rate is approximately 4% for the 25-year borrowing, though this will vary depending on market events that occur between now and the bond sale. Additionally, this ordinance authorizes the issuance of water revenue refunding bonds for the purposes of attaining debt service savings. The city's 2013 Series A bonds are outstanding in the amount of $150 million and require an above-market average interest rate of approximately 4.12%. These bonds may be refinanced without a prepayment penalty.
Correct.
The current estimated interest rate on the refunding bonds is 3.15% for the 15-year term. Refinancing of the 2013 A bonds at these rates is estimated to generate annual debt service savings of $750,000 per year through the bond's final maturity date in fiscal year 2038. This is equivalent to approximately $9 million of present value savings. Over the next few months, the city's Debt Management Division and the Portland Water Bureau will be jointly preparing the documentation for facilitating the bond sale, which is expected to occur in late spring or early summer. That concludes the overview of this item, and we are happy to answer any questions on the financing.
I have a question about this, Matt. So this is obviously a sizable issuance, and we're looking at sort of what I would describe as a disjointed interest rate period. I'm curious to know what the thinking was in terms of choosing to issue bonds now versus potentially delaying the issuance of this bond and hoping for a better interest rate environment? Is there some urgency to this, or what drove your timing at this particular time? Why now?
The timing is primarily driven by the capital spend rate of the Bureau, so as the Bureau has certain thresholds of liquidity metrics, and it funds, continues to fund capital work, essentially it needs to issue a new series of bonds in order to continue that work, in order to maintain the credit quality of the water system.
Okay, and so this, is this what you would describe then as a regular issuance?
Yes, this is a routine issuance. Both utilities typically will issue bonds every one to two years, which is a pretty regular occurrence for a large utility system.
Okay, and so just to reiterate what you said, to make sure I understood it, delaying the issuance of this bond could potentially jeopardize our credit rating, is that accurate?
Correct, unless there's, would be a major standstill on spending, which also would not be advisable.
Okay, good, and that certainly makes sense, because obviously if our credit rating deteriorates, the cost of issuing goes up, so I see the trade-off that you're engaged in there. Thank you. Any further questions, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Just to clarify on the mayor's question, the reason it would have a negative potential impact on credit rating is that it would be a liquidity impact if we delayed issuance now? Just want to make sure I'm following the connection there.
Yeah, so Cecilia, feel free to chime in as well. But, so based on the capital program that the utility is undertaking, and all of the projects that it's undertaking, including water treatment and others, it would be required to spend down its cash, its actual cash, which in order to preserve the credit quality of the water system, you want to maintain a certain level of liquidity in order to protect the system from shocks. So that's something that investors and credit rating analysts look at, is how much, when I say liquidity, it essentially means cash funding levels in order to withstand any sort of unforeseen circumstances that affect the system.
And the point being, we have CapEx that's committed, we have a spending plan that's committed, we're spending those dollars in the next X amount of months, so if we don't get the bond proceeds, we're eating into that liquidity.
That's 100% correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? Public testimony on this?
No one's signed up.
All right, this is the first reading of a non-emergency ordinance, it moves to second 1017, we can now go to the time certain item, item number 172, please.
Accept the Police Accountability Commission Quarterly Report for October through December 2022.
Colleagues, I will turn this over to Samir Canal of the Community Safety Division to introduce this item and our guest presenters, welcome.
Thank you very much, thank you all members of City Council. For the record, my name is Samir Canal, the Advisory Boards and Commissions Manager for the Community Safety Division. I'll be passing this over to Faith Aiken, one of the former co-chairs of the commission, to introduce two presenters who are remote, and three that are here in chambers, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Mayor Wheeler, good morning, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present the quarterly report of the Police Accountability Commission for October through December 2022. My name is Faith Aiken, and I was a co-chair of the Police Accountability Commission during the fact-finding phase of our work, which ended in October. I'm joined today by Christian Oriana Bauer, Ajay Amici, and Tiersa Oriana, along with Catherine McDowell, who were co-chairs during the powers and duties phase, which started in late October and continued after the end of this quarter. You may be wondering, why does it take five community volunteers to give a quarterly report? And I want to take the time to note that this participation before you reflects our commitment to working in partnership with City Council for a first-of-its-kind, community-led police oversight system. The report has been divided into three sections. The first covers the end of the fact-finding phase of our commission's work, the second covers the portion of the next phase, the powers and duties, which occurred during this quarter, and then the third section addresses the commission's request for support from City Council.
Cool. Hi, I'm Christian. In November 2020, 82% of Portland voters supported the creation of Charter Section 2-1, Test 10, sorry, which authorizes a new community police oversight board to both replace the current system of administrative investigations, discipline, and accountability, and allow for a greater community voice in changing the policies and directives of Portland police. The Police Accountability Commission was created by the City Council to develop the parameters and details of the community police oversight board.
Hello, I'm Tiersa. The commission self-organized through March 2022. From April through mid-October, the commission researched and heard from experts and affected parties, which resulted in three outcome documents. After that, the commission moved into the powers and duty phase, which began in late October and ended in February 2023. In total, the commission held 20 events in this three-month period, which means the Police Accountability Commission remains one of the most active parts of the city government.
The commission also had two briefings with IPR, one with the then-City Commissioner Joanne Hardisty, and started its powers and duties phase of work with a deep assessment of the Charter section that outlines the Community Police Oversight Board, which included a briefing from the people who crafted that charter text, Heidi Brown and Derek Bradley. The fact-finding phase's outcome documents are not code recommendations, but they are a set of shared understandings among members as to what information has been learned and the commission's viewpoints on it. They have each already been an important contribution to the commission's decisions and eventual recommendations to City Council. The actual recommendation development began with the next phase of work, which we'll be discussing in a few minutes. There were three outcome documents, the first was barriers and best practices to police accountability in Portland, which was part of last quarter's report, but today we'll talk about the other two, which assess proposals from subject matter experts and practices in other jurisdictions.
City Council tasked the commission with inviting experts to testify and answer questions, research necessary topics, and also to invite and seek out subject matter experts in Resolution 37527. In Resolution 37548, City Council said that the commission may seek out expertise from those they identify as beneficial to the process, both within and outside of Portland. The commission began by looking at national and industry groups on civilian oversight, such as the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, or NACOL, law enforcement sources, such as those at the U.S. Department of Justice, and recommendations given by contractors previously hired by the city, such as Eileen Luna Firebaugh's report from 2008. It also included the recommendations of Amici to Portland Settlement Agreement, staff support in other jurisdictions, giving their opinion on what worked and didn't work in their various systems, and other sources. The commission considered these recommendations, and those which they determined were worth deeper consideration were noted in our document, as were those we considered proposals to avoid. Summarizing these here, they included recommendations that healthy civilian oversight systems for police are independent, have authority to make disciplinary decisions, and can influence the policy and directives of police, have access to information from the police necessary to do that work, can investigate complaints from the community, as well as major incidents where there may not be a complainant, can apply a consistent set of findings so that the complainant, law enforcement, City Council, and the public can look at cases and understand what the outcomes are, can offer mediation for lower-level allegations, are reflective of those most affected, have guaranteed resources, including funding and staff, to do the work they need to do, are transparent, and finally, are able to evolve and improve over time. These items are not likely to be surprising, even though they come from different sources. They say many of the things, the same things that our charter text already reads. This is a testament to council's wisdom in crafting the charter text to be presented to voters, and the voters in approving the charter text.
Good morning, I'm Catherine McDowell, one of the current co-chairs of the commission. The commission also assessed other jurisdictions' practices, looking through hundreds of different practices in several categories. Some aspects assessed our jurisdiction and authority, including the oversight board's authority to determine its internal structure, how it assesses information, its process for addressing allegations of misconduct, its ability to structurally oversee the police, including recommending changes to policy, how the board membership is structured, how the agency is structured, and its responsibility to engage with the community, and finally, transparency, including reports to council, and access and reports to the public. The commission also looked at practices to avoid from other jurisdictions. Again, many were examined, and here are a few examples: being unable to finish an ongoing investigation due to statute of limitations, having parallel investigations between civilian oversight systems and internal affairs, releasing personal information of complainants to officers the complaint is about, and forcing community members to give complaints about police to the police. You may notice that some of these issues we addressed in our previous quarterly reports, because members of City Council or other bravers, such as those from PPB's Professional Standards Division, noted some of these exist in Portland too, and are barriers. Some others were mentioned under good practices, because Portland does not have these. For example, Portland has already partially addressed this last issue I raised by ensuring community members can give complaints through independent police review. Although these are not yet official recommendations, these documents have been very helpful in the powers and duties phase, which including, included developing the functions of the new system in more detail. This was also required by council when they asked us to speak to impacted communities. It's also just a good practice. We anticipate that if we suggest something new, council members may ask, has anyone tried this? And we want to be able to answer that question definitively when presenting our eventual code change recommendations to you later this year.
You Catherine, we're gonna take a pause here and take any questions from City Council members, and then move it on to our next co-chairs to discuss the next phase of work included in the report.
I had a question, and if you can't answer it now, that's fine, too. So on this list, on the slide that's currently up, the practices which you want to avoid, I'm trying to figure out how to avoid some of these things. Are you actually going through the work on each and every one of these issues and trying to find an alternative solution? For example, the parallel investigations between the civil, civilian oversight system and internal affairs, we still have to do the internal affairs investigation to ensure that policies have been adhered to? How would you propose making sure that there isn't duplication, or overlap, or simultaneous investigations, looking at slightly different parts of a particular incident?
Yeah, you know, that's a very good question, and I would say that is what we are starting to look at in, you know, the current phase, and have looked at somewhat in the previous phase that we'll be reporting on. You know, I think that overlap can be a problem if it represents duplication, and particularly if it is, it results in inconsistent findings or processes, that's not fair to anybody, the complainant or the member who's subject to the complaint. So we're looking at how to minimize that, there may be situations where parallel investigations are appropriate. For example, if you have a criminal investigation and a civilian review, you're necessarily gonna have an overlapping investigation. But I think our point here, and this is based on feedback we got from, really from all stakeholders, that the current system is overly complex and contains a fair amount of duplications.
that the current system is overly complex and contains a fair amount of duplication. So we're looking to minimize that. Obviously, there may be some situations where it's impossible to do so.
I also wanted to say, so, thinking about the different phases of work, we're really trying to stick within the very specific guidelines of what that phase of work is supposed to do. And so, you know, we looked at powers and duties, like, what are the powers of the new board? And, you know, we're in the structure and details, like, okay, what is the structure? And then we're going to be going to the transition, sort of, we have been doing this work of, okay, what do we want? And then we have, the transition portion is really like, how do we get from where we are now, which has, you know, these kind of requirements and these barriers and all these different things, to the system that we have been spending all this time kind of creating? And so I would say we haven't really necessarily delved deeply into that question, just because we're really sticking to, like, what our phase of work is supposed to do, because we don't really want to have, you know, scope creep, and we're already spending two to three days a week, you know, two to three-hour meetings, and taking on more work for a phase of work is just not possible right now. So just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just say what I said earlier. You're not getting paid very well to be
Yeah, zero.
On this committee, and it is
And less and less.
When you spread it out over an hourly basis.
Right, right.
But again, I really, I want to, first of all, in case I forget later, I really want to appreciate the time that you're all putting into this. This is a significant time commitment that you've already put into this, and there's more to do, as you said. And I want to acknowledge and respect that. With regard to the statutes of limitation, that's driven, I presume, by the state, the actual timeframes? I'm not sure I'm right about that, but the actual determination of the limitation, I believe, is a state function. I would assume that your effort here, then, would be on speeding up the process? Is that an accurate assumption or a false assumption? You can't really move the statute of limitations time. The clock is ticking, and the state determines that. But presumably, we could figure out ways to speed the process up?
You know, I think that's fair. And I will say that we are, you know, looking at, IPR currently has a hundred-and-eighty-day presumptive timeline, that's in the compliance agreement, and that's certainly something we would be, you know, including or trying to beat in our review, because I think we have consistently gotten the feedback that, you know, the process can be extended too far and create frustration for all people involved. But I think where this comes up is where you have tolling, because you have, for example, a criminal investigation or a civil suit, and something that has caused the administrative process to be stayed while another process continues. And I think the issue is really just trying to be sure that we don't, like, toll these civilian oversight investigations so long that we run into a statute of limitations issue.
And I'd be interested if collective bargaining is a part of this as well. I don't know that it is, but I'm just thinking out loud, it may be. And I would also argue that from the perspective of the members being investigated, there would probably be some support for speeding this process up, too. It's a really long process, and people are in limbo while they're going through this process and exercising their rights under the process, as well as the investigation continuing. And, you know, I'm making decisions on investigations that started years ago. It's a really slow process. And so I'd always be interested in your thoughts on that.
I actually had something to add to the previous point, which was, we've definitely run into, the statute of limitations thing that you mentioned, we've run into a few moments where state law kind of constricts the thing that we're trying to build, just by nature of the fact that it exists within a larger, more complex system, which is one of the reasons that we got implemented to do this in the first place. And so the list here of things to avoid were kind of an overarching list. We recognize that some of those things are going to take a longer period of time to try and overcome. And I feel like, I at least, I only speak for myself, I think other people in the commission also share this feeling, but I don't view this thing, the board, new board that we're building, as like the answer. It's like a first step in part of it. So I think when we present the code, we do have, we're keeping a tally of things that we can't cover right now that might need to be covered in the future. So like barriers that might actually, even if the board is implemented, there still might be like state laws that may affect its work, just by the nature of the fact that they exist, because we operate within the state of Oregon and within the country, the United States. So those are kind of things for like future reference or things to cover in the future. I don't know if that helps at all. I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, it does, and I appreciated the inclusion in this report. I think it was on a previous slide that this will be a learning effort, and there will be evolution as this unfolds. And I think that's a healthy thing to include in any policy, so I appreciate that perspective.
Absolutely.
Can I also add regarding the question that you just had? I think I'm sort of misremembering possibly what the question was, but, so, I just want to mention that a big part of the work that we're doing, this phase of work, is thinking about the advocates and the people that are actually walking people through this process. And so I don't know necessarily about speeding up the process, but in terms of giving people more support along this process, I mean, hopefully, you know, that kind of support will support investigations to proceed in a reasonable timeframe. So, I mean, it doesn't, the focus on advocates and advocates and that kind of thing doesn't necessarily directly talk, speak to that point, but I think the point is, you know, having advocates will make the system sort of smoother for, and provide the support needed for investigations to be completed.
Fair point. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Colleagues and the other Commissioner Gonzalez?
What's your, thanks so much for your report today. What is your perception of city support for your processes? Are you getting the resources you need from the city?
I mean, I feel so, as hard as we're working, you know, staff is, like, there's so much that they're constantly having to do, and especially in regards to like community engagement, you know, that process started really late, you know, because we didn't have a person to do that work. And so in terms of having, like, the amount of people that kind of do the behind-the-scenes stuff that allow us to do our work more smoothly, yeah, I think that they need more support, definitely, you know, more staffing. And besides that, you know, one of the things we're, I think we're going to mention later, but I'm just going to throw out there, is having a little bit more time. You know, even if we're not necessarily going all the way to October, as is stated in the DOJ settlement agreement, at least like, you know, a few more months or something, because, like I said, right now, we're meeting like two, sometimes up to four times a week, and that's like at the current pace, you know, to try and finish, and it's been a lot on us. So just to be able to, like, have a couple more months to do this work would really alleviate some of that and provide us with more support to do this better and to do due diligence, because this amount of work, and all of us have jobs and lives and stuff, like, I think it will potentially limit the quality of what we present, just because we're so, like, overworked, so, I don't know. What do you think?
I agree, yeah. I mean, we spoke with a few of you during the fact-finding phase in the summer, some of you might remember, and you all voiced support for the work. So overall, felt relatively supportive. Definitely, staff is understaffed, and they're working very, very hard. There are days where I'm in awe of how they're even doing it, and that's coming from, you know, us who are also doing a lot of work as well. And, yeah, time is the main thing, for the most part, yeah. And then any extra staff, I guess, same points, just echoing.
One last question. Can you just reiterate what your output, what output you are envisioning come October 2023? So what tangibly does it look like, just to reiterate what, you know, because I'm the new guy, so kind of walk me through what you anticipate your output will be by fourth quarter this year?
Definitely. Are you asking with the outcome of what we're trying to implement, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think
What does it look like? What's it
Yeah, for sure. Well, we're constructing it right now, so it's not fully formed, obviously, but from my understanding, it would be a recommendation that we'd be giving to you all to implement a new oversight system, which I think would take the form of code, I believe. That would be city code? There would be some city code in there. So I think it'd be a document that would kind of propose these things. But I don't know how much context you have, but I'll give a little bit background, some of it was in the report as well. But it was from the DOJ settlement agreement, so it's already kind of been implemented. The only thing would be to approve it, basically, or to reject it and then come up with one yourselves. That would be, those would be the two options. I don't know if that provides context or not. Hopefully, that was helpful.
It does, but just to be clear, but you are envisioning some code proposals.
I believe that would be, there would be part of that, that part of the recommendation would be part of it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
For my understanding. Someone else can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding.
I just want to say that I think that, you know, in everything we do, we go back to the council charge that, you know, formed us, that created us, that empowered us, and we just go through and we are ensuring that we're checking the boxes. So all of the things you've charged us to do, all of the people you've asked us to talk to, all of the research you've asked us to do, we're really very systematically going through that. So at the end, we will be delivering a recommendation for the structure of this new oversight board that will be based on all of the very specific items you asked us to look at, all of the specific conversations you've asked us to have. And we'll be working certainly with the city attorney's office to present that, to the extent there's code changes that need to be implemented to, you know, go to the next step. We will be presenting those as well for your review.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi, this is Faith. I just want to hop in really quick. Commissioner Gonzalez, I think sometimes as we share our quarterly report, it can be confusing of like, what's the what here? And a reminder that this is a look back all the way back to October. And so what we are sharing today is really the results of fact-finding and research that was done back through October. And my colleagues before you are going to come soon to then present, okay, what did we do with the facts that we found? And so that's why this is going to be a little disjointed of like, wait, you're kind of going back in time and then forth. And so it's important when we consider the full timeline that what we just presented was the research and the facts that we found based on feedback from experts and experts within the city. And then my colleagues will be presenting, well, so what, what are we going to do with the facts that we found in the research to recommend a new system? And I think one thing that will provide a lot of clarity moving forward is we have just approved what the powers and duties will be, as my colleagues will mention, and we have a very helpful flow chart. And I think if you're so interested in getting into the weeds, that is a very helpful demonstration of what we are recommending the new oversight board to be. It provides a visual demonstration of what happens for a complainant as they make a complaint. So hopefully, that is helpful for me.
Yes, please share with our office, it'd be appreciated of that. Thank you.
We'll now move into explaining the powers and duties phase, which Christian, Jay, and I were co-chairs for. The commission organized its work into six phases. As previously mentioned, the powers and duty space was the third one and focused on the functions of the new system. We'll report on the first half of it today and the second half when we come back in two months to give the report for January through March of this year. Starting in February, the commission moved into the structure and details phase, which is the form of the new system. After that concludes, the commission will know what the end goal looks like and will develop the transition plan and how this fits into the broader system of city government. And finally, convert all of these agreements into code texts and come to agreement to recommend all that to city council. We're also doing community engagement events, as previously mentioned, and parallel to everything throughout this process.
And during this phase of work, the commission was broken up into three subcommittees, each of which was focused on developing one part of the new system. First was access to information, which covered how the oversight board and agency will receive the information they needed to do their work. Access, obviously, it's in the title. Second is officer accountability, which is how an allegation of misconduct is processed within the new system, including the creation of a new flow chart and timelines. That's the flow chart that Faith was referencing. Third is structural oversight, which is a community oversight of the Portland Police Bureau as a whole, and included recommending changes to policy directives, and if necessary, law that goes to Portland Police Bureau leadership or city council. By the end of the quarter, all three documents were being drafted with access to information nearly ready for full commission review.
So I mentioned that we got a new staff person for community engagement, which means that PAC community engagement accelerated during this quarter. The commission has already heard from many people through public comments at meetings, starting at the first meeting of the PAC. In June, we started receiving advanced public comment. In September, the city hired an engagement and communications coordinator to support this work. And finally, in this quarter, we began holding community engagement events, including two listening sessions in November. And to anybody listening live or at home who wants to give input into the Police Accountability Commission's work, we want to hear from you. There are multiple ways to do this, including coming to a live meeting, giving public comments, or coming to a community engagement event, and the link to our calendar is on the slide. You can also give public comments between meetings, which is circulated to the members in three ways. We have web form, a voicemail line, and we can do postal mail as well. So we're going to pause here, and even though we just took questions, I guess we'll take some more questions, and then continue into the last part of the presentation.
Why don't I suggest, just in the interest of time, why don't you go into the last part of the presentation? Let's hold our questions till the end, and I know we have substantial public testimony as well, so I'm mindful of the fact that people are waiting to testify.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, so this final section is on what's coming up, as well as requests for city support. The support covers October to December, and subsequently, we finished the powers and duties phase. The structure and details phase started in February. This is a critical time for the commission as we continue our work, and we have a request to city council for one specific resource to assist us in this work. I mentioned before, the PAC meets very frequently to try and meet the council's deadline and assignments. By the time it will have existed for eighteen months, it will have, the commission will have had at least one hundred-and-nineteen events, which is more than even the Charter Commission had in two years. And we all know the Charter Commission did a lot of work. Continuing to work at this level of frequency creates two problems for the PAC. If we focus on full commission meetings, we're going to either lose members to burnout or resignation, or missing meetings and needing to be replaced. If we focus on subcommittees, equity between the members is diminished, and members with day jobs, caregiving responsibilities, health concerns, and more will be able to contribute less relative to their peers, making the PAC less representative of this community. And the PAC's work is what is required to do the job given by city council. We're not saying this is hard to complain, we're saying that this is a lot, we want to do it right, and we have been doing it right, but as community members who are doing this on a volunteer basis, we need your help. On December eighth, the commission, by consensus, asked city council for that help. As you know, under the settlement agreement, the commission has to present to the city council by October twenty-ninth, 2023, but the city council has given the current commission until June ninth, 2023. The October twenty-ninth date came about as part of a council ordinance, which amended the settlement agreement and put the commission into the text, which city council approved unanimously. Also, we know that having a clear view of our eventual deadline as early as possible will help with the planning, with the project planning and scheduling of meetings to get there. We don't want to schedule three to four meetings a week now and lose members who can't do that many. Then in a couple of months, the timeline shifts and we go to one meeting a week, when we could be steady and predictable for PAC members and for the public in the meantime.
Our next slide, thank you. So our request is based off of the scope of work. It's large and complex, it's based off of limitations of volunteers' time, and trying to avoid asking members to meet more than twice a week. As a side note, recognize that Commissioner Ryan brought this before us at our September fifteenth quarterly report. It's based off of all the different bodies of law we need to understand and navigate in creating a system to recommend to city council, and also on the fact that we can't move as quickly as we'd like sometimes due to bureaucratic delay within the city, like waiting five weeks for a new member's email address to be created, or four months for facilitators' contracts to be approved. It's based off of our pacing last spring and summer being slower, in part because we originally thought the settlement agreement deadline of October twenty-ninth was our deadline, and then we were told later the deadline from court slash DOJ to the city for the commission to stop meeting is different from the deadline from the city to the commission for the commission to stop meeting. Sorry, that's a mouthful. Next slide, please.
Cool. This request is based on looking at other large-scale, complex city projects as well, like the Charter Commission, which got two years to do its work. We discussed how beneficial the briefings have been so far. In the documents we presented today, we quoted Commissioner Rubio and Mayor Wheeler. In our Officer Accountability Document, which we'll present at the next quarterly report, we specifically cited Commissioner Map's advice as well. We've cited Commissioner Ryan's advice in a document previously presented, and we look forward to learning from Commissioner Gonzalez in the next few. and we look forward to learning from Commissioner Gonzalez in the next few weeks. We also quoted our Portland Police Bureau briefer's as well as others. And we want to keep hearing people, and we still have briefings. We haven't yet been able to schedule that are really important to the system's success, like the Portland Police Commanding Officers Association, for example. And finally, we looked at the language given to us by city council, which was mentioned earlier. We've been going through that during each phase. Here's some of the resolutions. Resolution 37527 says that "an inclusive, diverse, community-driven process is needed to develop recommendations to city council for the structure and processes of the new oversight system. Working with the community takes time to build relationships and gather people together, especially those who might not trust the city to do the right thing," which, as we even heard earlier, you know, there is some of that, obviously. Resolution 37527 and 37548 both say that "there must be a lengthy involved process where consideration is given to the complex topic of police accountability." And I mentioned earlier how we've been running into that complexity throughout the process as well. Thank you.
This was on the city council agenda on January 18th and was referred back to the mayor's office. We'd ask if you could please bring that document back to the council agenda and vote on it here, if possible, to give the commission enough time to do its work. While other resources aren't helpful and great, there is one resource which the city council has that you could give us today and which would be most beneficial to ensuring we can do this work and do it as well as we would like, and that is time.
In closing, we'll briefly discuss what's coming up next. We're in the structure and details phase, and we're working on board membership, the oversight, staff and agency, and reporting and transparency, which is how the system provides information to the public and to the city council. We have community engagement events coming up, the next one of which is on March 22nd. Finally, the next quarterly report covering January through March 2023 will be presented in late April or early May.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to brief you on the work of the Police Accountability Commission through the end of 2022. We look forward to continuing our work to honor the will of the voters in creating a new system of accountability, including a new oversight board for the Portland Police. This concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may all have.
Thank you. Excellent report. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that report. It was very thorough. And again, I just want to reiterate the mayor's comments about your dedication and your tireless hours upon hours of work. Just a big appreciation there. My questions are, I have a couple. First is about community engagement. You've been talking about having sessions with community engagement. Can you talk about how those are going and how attended are they? Like, what is the number that you're doing? And then how well attended, and what are some common themes that are coming up and questions that you're getting?
So I would say, I mean, I'm not sure about exact numbers, but definitely a few dozen, yeah, like anywhere from 20, 30, I would say. Depending on the event. And what we're seeing is kind of a general frustration with the current system. And I think a lot of people sort of misunderstand what our charge is, and they think that we're in charge with shaping this current system. So we get, you know, a lot of people that are really angry because they feel like the current oversight system is not working and there is not accountability. And so that is definitely a large part of like the sentiments from a lot of people. And then we also have people from the totally opposite side that are annoyed and angry that we're fulfilling the DOJ's requirements in the settlement agreement, like that don't think we should be doing this at all and that it's a waste of time, even though it is something that is mandated by the Department of Justice as a result of, you know, actions committed like by, you know, the Portland Police Department. So we have a wide range of opinions and, yeah, a wide range of just different, yes, sides that come to our meetings. But I think the general consensus is like, what we have right now is like not working for anybody. And so that definitely, all sides are saying that.
Okay. And the next question I have is about, more about your internal processes. And you have a very diverse body that's doing all this work. Can you tell me a little bit about how the process itself is inclusive and how you're balancing out voices to ensure equal participation and accessible, inclusive, equitable participation of all its members?
Well, I don't know if Faith wants to jump in, because I see Faith's hand is up. But if not, then I can.
Sure. Just one comment regarding the community engagement events. I think one of the things that we've been consistently hearing is that our events have not been trauma-informed. And so the matter of violence from police and asking community members for feedback can create a lot of trauma for people. And so that's something that we've been mindful of, is how do we do this in a sensitive way and gather feedback and create a place for people to be heard, but also to not re-traumatize them? I think that is a really important consideration and something that we, I don't think we've nailed. It's something that we need to continue to work on. And then I think your further question, Commissioner Rubio, is that is a constant challenge. There's 20 volunteers. We have diverse lived experiences. I think one of the questions in the application for us to be a participant is how do you work within groups with diverse opinions or backgrounds? And so that's something that we're all really mindful of. I think one thing that we, I acknowledge is that equity does not mean equal. So some folks are carrying a larger load than others. And I don't think that is unequal, but it's often not inequitable. So as folks have more capacity to write or to research, we grant them the opportunity to do that. And I, oftentimes, for me, one thing that represents equity is my ability to ask my colleagues, like, I've got, I'm burning the barrel and I don't have a lot to give, so can you step in here? And I think that as we talk about equity, we are trying to consider not just racial equity and our racialized identities, but also what we have to contribute. As my colleagues have mentioned, it's a very large load to carry. And so I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be able to look at colleagues and be like, I gotta go off camera. Can you cover me in this? And I think that we've really formed a camaraderie to be able to do that with one another. And that's reflected in the way that you've heard from co-chairs. We are taking turns as co-chairs. So that's why you've heard from so many members of the commission.
And if I could just add on that, 17 different members of the commission have been a co-chair of something so far between the subcommittees and the full commission. So it has definitely just been very, very broad.
Great. That's great to hear. My last question is, you asked for some extra time. And so can you just talk a little bit about what that would mean for you, having that extra time? I know you have already, but just, yeah, what specifically will you use that time for?
Yeah, so I'll give you a couple of examples as I respond to this question. When scheduling meetings, trying to have a meeting on Monday evenings and Thursday evenings and finding that that's not sufficient means occasionally having to look at potentially scheduling a third meeting a week. The last week of March, we were looking at adding a third meeting to that week, which is something that I know has come up in the past here. It also prevents members from being able to read all the documents for as long and process them around their other scheduling obligations, which means that the meeting time is often a little bit less effective than it might be. So with additional time, it would allow for greater spacing between the meetings of a specific subcommittee. And those times, that time wouldn't be lost because it could be used for community engagement events or could be used for a different subcommittee. It would also allow for not having to go to a third meeting a week and allowing for that inclusive, community-driven process, to quote the council resolution, to be enacted. And the members often meet outside of this to plan agenda setting, for example, which is not something that is done in a meeting, but needs time for co-chairs to meet. So that's in addition to the two public meetings a week. And so having the additional time would allow for the inclusion of all of these things in less frequent and with more spacing to allow for more time to process, more time to engage the community, and more time for members to consider what they're being asked to decide upon.
I just want to say that our plan has a community engagement phase at the end, when we're done. When we have, you know, the package ready before it presents to you, we would really like to be able to present it to the community, get feedback, and do fine tuning. And I'm afraid if we, if the process gets truncated, that piece may fall out. And I think that would be a shame. So we, our plan includes that right now. And I think realistically, that isn't going to happen if we have to conclude all of our work by June. If we have a few more months, I think we can engage in that final community engagement effort, which I think will be critical in terms of presenting the best possible product to the council.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Any further questions? Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, Mayor, thanks, and thank you for the questions, Commissioner Rubio. There were some of mine as well. I know we have a lot of testimony, so I was wondering if I should wait for that. But I just want to put out a couple of things. First of all, like everyone has said, the labor that you're all putting into this is really intense. And your shared leadership model seems really noble, and I appreciate that when you explained how often the co-chairs are rotating. I also know there's ramp up when you take on that role. So I can only imagine how much sacrifice you're all making, so I appreciate that. 82% voted yes, and that's the good news. The challenge is that 82% voted yes. And that means there's a lot of different reasons why people voted yes. And sometimes I'm concerned, are we hearing from the different pockets, whatever that might be? And how are you going about in your engagement phase of trying to do enough outreach so that you hear the collection of voices that make up that 82%? I'm just curious. And are you at that phase now of making those kinds of decisions? It sounds like you are.
So there's sort of two different types of community, and there's more than two, but two specifically. There's the community engagement where, and the commission wrote a community engagement framework back last March, in which they addressed how they wanted to do this. One type is asking folks open-ended questions that help to develop the recommendations. And then secondly, once there is essentially a draft at the end, going back and saying, this is what the members heard and decided based off of that engagement, where can that be adjusted, as Co-Chair Catherine just mentioned? And so that second part is at the end and is not yet there. The commission's not quite at that point. But the first part is ongoing throughout this entire process. And so one of the things that the commission has started to do with the help of now having additional staff to support that is reaching out, not only doing general open events for the public in as many different formats and timelines as possible, but also talking to specific groups, community-based organizations, business groups, chambers of commerce, things like that, and trying to plan, ask them to host events that are designed to give input from their networks and their members to the commission, and doing that in a diverse way that's representative of the entirety of not only the 82%, but actually the full 100%, because the 18% who didn't support this should have their voices represented too, now that we know that there will be an oversight board. And so that process is ongoing. Those took a little bit longer to get started because we have to work around their schedules, the community-based organizations or business groups or whatever the group may be. But that's how, the two together of the open, general listening sessions, Q and As, et cetera, as well as the specific groupings are designed to collectively, diversely represent the viewpoints of the entirety of this community. Does that answer the question?
It did, and you went beyond. Thank you. So my experience with something this complex, when you're going to come with findings, and is that when do we get to weigh in? And sometimes when we have something this complex, it's such a hurry-up-and-wait process. So the engagement needs space to breathe, but also we need time so that we can engage with you. And I just want to make sure that we, I want to know, one, when's the right time to really tune in? I think we've, I've been respecting your journey that you're on, and you're all working your tails off. So it's when can we jump in, not just to listen to understand, but to give some points of view on where things are landing? Like, when do you want our engagement?
You could submit public comment too. I mean, no one's stopping you from that. But also, you know, you could always come to our meetings. But in terms of, are you asking about like, creating a specific time outside of our meeting time to meet and present what we have now, or like what?
So will the council be able to provide feedback, say in June, when you present something to us? Is that in the process?
That is in the project plan.
It was just hard to look at the timelines and know when that was. That's all I'm getting clarity on.
Yeah, ideally prior, so first, we haven't yet had a briefing with Commissioner Gonzalez. We have that invitation out, and we want to make sure that we're hearing from everybody, ideally more than once at the commission. But after that, there'll be a time probably in late April to early May where there's more of an idea of what the shaping of this looks like. And time and schedule permitting, we would definitely, I know the commission members want and have expressed this several times, the idea of bringing folks back. As the co-chairs mentioned, there is actually at least one thing from every member of the commission, of the council, I should say, that has briefed so far that made it into a document, at least one thing, more than one in a couple cases.
No, I heard that, and you did that in your report today as well.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great. Any further questions before we go to public testimony? How many people do we have signed up today?
18.
18. Okay, so let's do this. I want to honor and respect people's desire to speak. Try to keep your comments to two minutes, but we'll let you go to three. At three, we'll definitely cut you off because there's a lot of people who need to testify. And I'm also mindful, Kealan, and please remind me that at 11:30, we'll have to take a break for the closed captioner. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. First up, we have Philip Chachka on line.
Thanks. And so name for the record, when you come up, you don't need to tell us your address or anything like that.
Hi, my name is Philip Chachka. I am a member of Portland Cop Watch. For transparency, one of our members is a P A C commissioner. Portland Cop Watch supports the adoption of this quarterly report. And more importantly, the P A C's unanimous request that the city align the deadline of the P A C's work with the terms of the U S D O J agreement, which will give the P A C until the end of October to finish the work instead of June, as the city is suggesting. You should, so you know something about me. I recently sued and reached a $5,001 settlement with the city and the Portland Police for violating my civil rights. During the 2020 protests against racist and brutal policing, an unknown P P B officer sprinted up behind me and hit me with a baton in the back and in the neck, then ran off to hit other people. I didn't file a complaint with the city's current oversight system because I feel the system is so unbelievably biased towards the police that there was little hope for the police, little hope the police and city would take responsibility for their harmful actions. I have been attending many of the P A C meetings since they formed, and I'm so grateful for the time, effort, care, and sense of urgency the commission has devoted to their task of creating a fair, effective, and transparent oversight system. I look forward to the police oversight system that is community-led and independent from the police and city institutions that have conflicts of interest when it comes to holding police accountable. The system the P A C has designed takes away multiple levels of review that have led to confusion and delay by having a person file a complaint with the new board, and then all activities related to their complaint up until officers order to undergo corrective action are handled by the same board. The current system could have a person bounce to Police Internal Affairs, then to the Bureau's Police Review Board, then to I P R's Citizen Review Committee, and then to the chief, and sometimes even to the city council itself. It's a complicated process. I appreciate the thorough quarterly report, and it makes clear that the P A C is working hard to accomplish much in such a short amount of time, as the city council fulfilled their responsibility by standing by the timeline you originally wrote for the P A C and the P A C members are requesting. Please give the P A C 18 months from the implementation of the amendment to the settlement agreement and make it till October. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have A.J. McCrery.
Hello. Is it on? So I'm a community member and a community leader, and it has been really interesting to watch this process. This is very forward-thinking. Council needs to get behind it, not in talking, because, you know, Portland loves to talk about talking, but in action. And we just heard from this report that they need more support. If this is a really forward-thinking thing that we're doing, we just saw charter pass, and as somebody who participated in getting outreach for charter, we were underfunded. We didn't have enough support. But we still got the word out. This committee also needs that same support. And if Portland is going to be a place that is saying that we are doing things differently and that we are moving things forward, or that we are coming together, we actually have to do that. We have to do that with resources. We have to do that with patience. We have to stretch ourselves. We have to. We have to really actually listen to community members. And the way that they are doing this outreach is profound. This is something that we should be looking at in all of our bureaus, in all of the ways that we are doing city government, and that is what I'm asking for. Support this committee in a way that Charter Commission was not supported. Support this committee, and also use what they're doing, and start, let's start taking this energy and bringing it to other bureaus, to other issues. Housing, our homeless issue, education, the way that we're engaging with the city, with our citizens. Here's an opportunity, and so I'm asking all of you, as a community leader, as a taxpayer, as a citizen, as a mom, to really lean into this and to do right by all of us, to be accountable in this process, but also be accountable on what the citizens here are asking for, because we do need things to be moving differently. And we all are asking for that, and I know that some of y'all are interested in that. So let's do that. Let's be about the action. And this committee right here, here's the moment for us to lean in. Here is the moment. Get them the additional resources, get them the extra time. Help them in the ways that they're being asked to help, and shift the way that our government is engaging with citizens. Here is the opportunity, here is the moment, let's do it.
Next up, we have Brittany Brock.
My name is Brittany, and I pronounce she/her. Thank you so much to this committee. You all are doing incredible work. Thank you for doing this difficult and time-consuming work as well. It really helps us strive towards a better city. I have some questions that need clarification by Mr. Wheeler, who approves the report, not the committee, because, once again, this committee is doing great work. These questions do not have a right or wrong answer, because I do not believe that. I just believe in knowing and not knowing. Currently, I and others have doubts with anything around the city of Portland and the Portland Police. For me, as a citizen, to help rebuild trust between the city and its people, the following questions must be answered for transparency before we even get into approving these reports. We need action and accountability now. Why are we the largest city in America with a police force without body cameras? Why does it need to be examined if it is feasible, Mayor Wheeler? My follow-up question to that, can you please answer, is justice feasible to you? That sounds like a rhetorical question, but in this case, we can actually buy cameras for our officers. Justice is literally quite feasible. KGW reports that there remains an ongoing argument between the city and Officers' Union. The union wants officers to be able to consult their body cam video before writing their reports. Now, Mayor Wheeler, really think here. Why do you think the officers want to be able to review the footage before they write their reports? Let me ask again now. Why are we the only major city without body cameras? Why do you think the officers want to review the footage before they write their reports? I'm not done with my line of questioning. I can recognize, Mr. Wheeler, we do speak very different languages. Your master's degree is in public policy, which mine is in philosophy. So as far as someone like me who hasn't studied that, please explain to me why it is so hard to bargain with the Portland Police Bureau. I will admit, I can be a bit of an idealist here. So this is just my idea. An August street roots journalist, Piper McDaniel, reported that Portland is operating what is likely the most expensive pension program in the nation, a system which imposes a significant cost burden and could incur some financial risk to the city. The property taxes funding this pension program cost more than the city of Portland Metro, Willnuma County, and Portland Community College bonds combined. And yet, the system funds only those who became employed by the department prior to 2007. All told, in 2021, the pension program cost taxpayers 141 million. This year, the program requested 199 million for pension payments. Portland's pension system is rare, because it does not require employers or employees to contribute. Through the city, though the city doesn't believe the system is risky, analysts warn the right combination of low tax revenue and high pension costs could result in the pension plan consuming a substantial portion of city property taxes. Also, some believe asking taxpayers to foot the bill for pensions isn't fair. Mr. Wheeler, can you use the tax money from the pension program that no other city has to put cameras on the Portland Police to support this committee? Not only will be the last city to ditch this antiquated pension program, but we could also be the last city to join others in having cameras and having a more accountable police force. And we can support this committee in giving them more resources. Last thing, the greatest perpetrators of violence in the city are the police, not the poor.
I'll quickly answer your questions. Number one, why are we the last city in America? It has largely to do with the fact that our police bureau is unionized, and they have taken a very strong stance. I'm not telling them they're wrong, but the council has a different stance with regard to whether or not they should be able to view prior to writing their reports. As I'm sure you're aware, the council and the union disagree on that. We're still adhering to the required process under federal law. It's going to arbitration, and ultimately, an arbitrator will decide whether this council is correct in terms of the current position around not viewing in advance, or alternatively, whether the union is correct in terms of their belief. And of course, overlaying all of this is the fact that the United States Department of Justice has a say on this as well. That is in process, and it is because we are following federal labor law and federal labor practices with regard to collective bargaining. I will note that I believe I am the first mayor in the history of the city to actually allocate funding towards body-worn cameras. I believe very strongly that we need body-worn cameras, and I believe it's not only a good tool for accountability, it's a good tool for investigative follow-up, to understand what actually happened. So I'm very strongly supportive of body-worn cameras.
Then show us some action.
I'm sorry?
Then show us some action.
You mean, like, passing budgets, allocating actual dollars, engaging in a collective bargaining process with a very clearly stated opinion?
Yeah, you can speak that up. You can speak that up.
Thank you for your testimony. Next individual, please.
Next up, we have Danielle Mallard.
Welcome.
In person. Is Danielle here? Let's go on to Dan Salazar, I believe is joining us online.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So I'm testifying on this today, because I do think that we need to actually focus on implementing the body cameras more efficiently. I know that we just had a discussion about that, but I'm also concerned about the fact that the police union has such sway, essentially, over the council, and I do want to know that every other union actually has to fight the cops occasionally for their rights. But shifting on now, I want to focus on the tent ban that was passed by Commissioner Gonzalez just before the heavy snow. I think that is very concerning, because shelter is a basic human right, and while I do not believe there is any hostile or malicious intent-
Dan, there will be plenty of opportunity for you to be able to discuss this with Commissioner Gonzalez and the council, but that is not the issue on the table currently. The issue on the table currently is related to the Police Accountability Commission and the report they've just given. Can you please keep your comments related to that?
Yes, I'm aware. This was something that me and a few other people set up.
Next up, we have Mallory Bustos.
Hi, yes, I am a public health major, and within public health, we believe that there's a health-in-all-policies approach, and that means bringing, so every policy is a public health issue. And so I believe that also includes police accountability and police work in general. And I definitely support this report and giving them the support that they need, including the time extension, if not, you know, money and everything else that they need to do this. They're doing amazing work. I also would like to speak on holding Commissioner Gonzalez accountable for his ban. Can you tell me when, in this process, I would be able to speak on that?
Not on this item, for sure. This is the Police Accountability Commission report to council, and I would just respectfully ask that people stay on topic. Thank you.
Will we be able to speak at the end of the meeting, or is it a different meeting?
That is not on the agenda today.
Okay, thank you. Well, I definitely support this report and support holding all police accountable, and Commissioners, the Mayor, everybody accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Next up, we have Keely Higgins.
Thank you for the time. Ted, I believe the last time I saw you in this kind of setting was when I gave testimony demanding that you end the use of poisonous gas on humans in this city. I recognize that there must have been some sort of miscommunication about when we were talking about the tent ban. I'm going to go for it. To give some context as to why I'm here, to address Renee Gonzalez's ban on the distribution of tents and sleeping bags via street response and the fire department-
You guys, you guys, cut the mic for a minute, please.
-I operate within a framework of mutual aid for folks who don't know what that is. Mutual aid is a voluntary-
This is extremely disrespectful to the Police Accountability Commission, that have this floor right now to discuss their item. You're not talking about that. So either get on topic, or we're going to ask you to leave. Their impression is inaccurate. I don't know where you got that information. We post the agenda. The agenda is very clear in terms of what we're discussing. It's a public document. The Police Accountability Oversight Commission-
But I'm asking, when is it that we can address that?
It's not on, it is not on today's agenda.
You see these people standing up, like, we're all here for it.
Well, you're here at the wrong time. I'm sorry. This is the Police Accountability-
You're not the right time.
I cannot.
Why?
But I can tell you, it's not right now.
If we were going to do-
So the way that people give public testimony on any subject, on any subject you would like to give public testimony, you can see the council clerk, or you can go to the council clerk's website. You can sign up to talk about any subject you want for three minutes at a city council meeting. I would encourage you to do that.
But not right now.
Absolutely not right now. It's not on today's agenda. That is correct. The item you are referring to is not on today's agenda. You can talk about it during communications, yes, and she would be more than delighted to sign you up for that.
All right, well, lift the ban is killing people, it's inhumane, and it's evil, and it's skate hard, and can I get a fuck Ted Wheeler in the past? Fuck Ted Wheeler!
You know, when you do that, it actually totally undercuts the rest of your argument.
I don't really fucking care what you think, Ted.
Well, and as a result of your behavior, nobody really cares what you think either. Did you consider that possibility?
That's not true, Ted.
All right, next.
Professional, Ted.
You know what? We're going to go to virtual if you have one more outburst. And I don't care if you like me or not, that's not the point. The point is, you are disrespecting other people who have put a lot of time and energy into the Police Accountability Commission, and you are being extremely disrespectful of their time and energy. And I don't know why you think your opinion is more important than theirs at this particular juncture. So if you want to stay, stay on point, do not interrupt, do not disrupt the people who are trying to speak, who signed up to testify on the Police Accountability Report. I'm just asking you to be decent people. Can you do that? You're not sure? Okay, well, we'll find out. Next individual, please.
Next up, we have Rochelle Chase Miller.
Be they a police officer or a politician, they take on the obligation to work in the best interest of all citizens. Constance Wu said, "Public service is about serving all the people, including the ones who are not like you." But how does one represent those who are different from themselves? When decisions are based in paternalism and the presumption that the powerful know more about the needs of their constituents than the constituents themselves, leaders are not demonstrating accountability to those they serve. That's why commissions such as the Police Accountability Commission are so important. When cruelty is cloaked as tough love, for people we don't trust to participate in making the decisions that impact them the most, we are not being accountable. A lot of terrible actions have been justified by paternalism and supremacy. Colonization, slavery, residential schools, conversion therapy are all examples of those in power claiming to know what is best, enforcing inhumane policy on the people they've dispossessed and reinforced by police and politicians. The same oppressive paternalism is present in Commissioner Gonzalez's decision to deny tents and tarps to unhoused people during freezing winter conditions, no less. The claim that denying shelter will help more than it hurts is not data-driven, and it is not humane. I'm coming back to the accountability-
Please do.
Let's see, it's easier when I'm not interrupted. Blankets and sleeping bags don't do a lot of good in the rain and snow without the ability to stay dry, and the idea that you solve a problem like tent fires by making coal-
Folks, we'll take a ten-minute recess. We're in recess. We'll reconvene virtually.